All right, reminder to all commission staff to turn on their microphones. And I'm going to call to order the planning commission. It is Wednesday, February 15th, 2023 at 6:00. Good evening to everybody. Our first order here is call the roll, please.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Marone.
Present.
Gorm.
Here.
Woodward.
Here.
Duval.
Present.
Stangline.
And with that, we'll have our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, physical, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Our first item here of official business is number five. This is to review and authorize the changes to the planning commission bylaws. Mr. Kramvik, please.
Yep, approval of the agenda.
Got it. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To approve the agenda.
We got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And now we have our agenda. So let's go back to that number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Kramvik, please.
So, staff reviewed the planning commission bylaws and has recommended changes to coincide with the rules of procedure and decorum that were adopted by city council, specifically in subdivision three of that document that was approved by council. These rules shall also apply to committees of the council as well as city boards and commissions, whether created by charter or city code. So with that, staff is recommending changes based on that document.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. So barring a full reading of this, I'm hoping that everyone who had this in their packet was able to write it or read it over. And at this point, I'll ask for any comment or any questions for staff on what's been submitted. Please, Mr. Gorm.
What was the motivation for the city council to do this?
I believe the motivation is they just wanted a consensus to have all the boards and committees essentially have the same type of bylaws and procedure of schedule with the commissions and committees.
That doesn't strike me as a motive, as a reason, though.
I think they, I believe it was about uniformity.
Because?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of any other, you know, things behind it, but...
All right. I just want to say, I think as far as most of the changes, I'm fine with, you know, as far as updating the language, I think that makes some sense. Call me sentimental, but I've always been a fan of commissioners' questions and comments. And I think that should stay just the way it is for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's informal, it's folksy sounding, it's not reports. The reports they give in city council aren't reports anyhow, truth be told. And so I like the folksy nature of it, and I like the fact that it addresses questions, that it says, "Commissioners, this is your chance to ask questions, this is your chance to question the process." So that's the only amendment or change I would suggest is that we keep questions and comment time. I like it.
Very good.
That's all I got.
Anything else? Procedurally, James, if we were to kick this back, this needs to go back to city council, correct?
Yeah, if there were any major changes with that, you know, I know the council, you know, it's called reports, but it's meant as more of a comment time as well. So it's not an official report that's submitted.
Right, understood. Well, what I'm saying is, is this draft is trying to be created analogous, in some version of analogous form, throughout all committees and commissions, so...
Exactly, and the EDA just went through this process as well.
Correct. So we're trying to get everybody approving hypothetically the same document, so, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but it would need to go back through a process. Yes, please, Mike.
Mr. Chair, I would just want to echo Commissioner Gorm's language for item number 11 under the order of business. I think it's, as opposed to reports, I mean, the nature is that, that not only just activities that the commissioners have been formally involved in, but also general comments, questions of operation. I think it makes sense. I don't think it would be inconsistent, whether I think the direction of what city council's looking to do, but I think it maybe clarifies more so what that agenda item might be.
Understood, thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, please.
I'm of the same opinion. I think that that is the way it's worded in there. It doesn't specifically say that there's an opportunity to come back. And I think the way we operate is great, and we should continue to feel like there's open feedback there.
Very good. You have anything?
I'm gonna say whatever I want, regardless of what you call it, so...
Yeah, exactly. And my understanding of the crafting of this document is it doesn't necessarily mean that every single commission has to have the same document. Hypothetically, we could leave this in our own, in our own procedures, is that correct? Is that your understanding, James? Or do we need to try to get everybody playing on the exact same team across all boards and commissions?
I don't believe all of the commissions have updated it yet, but, you know, based on the language and wording from city council for committees, it should be, you know, adopted to have a similar order of business.
Understood. So at this point, I'm gonna, sensing that we have a general consensus that we'd like to have some amendments made, I think we're just gonna kick it back here. We don't necessarily need to take a motion on that, just kick it back with comments. Does that, does that work for you, James?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Any other comments, questions?
No, I have...
Yeah, please.
If we can make a recommendation, since we're kicking it back with comments, that perhaps that change be made across the board. If it has to be uniform on all of the, all of the documents, all the way across, that perhaps that would be better phrased on all of them, all the way across the board.
To put essentially, commission member comments?
Yeah. Yeah, questions and comments.
Questions and comments.
Yep.
Okay.
If it needs to be all the way across the board, then...
Maybe an exclusivity for those, for that group in the planning commission, yes.
Troublemakers.
Generally.
Very good. Anything else, anyone on that one? All right, we're gonna move on. We are looking for an approval of the minutes, please.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the minutes from January 18th, 2023.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Duval.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Woodward. We have any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Abstain?
An abstention. Okay, very good.
Just 'cause I wasn't here.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right. Item number seven, this is unfinished business. This is the final plat for Creekside Community Development addition to West Brainerd. Mr. Kramvik, please, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of this final plat request is to consolidate 11 lots into four larger lots. This coincides with a couple of applications for conditional use permits for the utilization and construction of a 12-unit multiplex apartment, as well as a boarding house and health club. These were also heard by planning commission at the previous meetings. So with that, these lots are in the TN2 district within the city. With the final plat, all of these proposed lots meet the minimum lot size requirement, which is only 4,000 square feet. The applicant also proposes a 12-unit apartment on Lot 1. With the calculation of Lot 1 and the size of it, as well as the density, staff came up with a density of 9.73 dwelling units per acre. The minimum in the TN2 district is nine dwelling units per acre, so it does meet that requirement. Also, all of the proposed lots meet the minimum 45-foot lot frontage standard for the TN2 district. So with that, the planning commission and city council approve the preliminary plat and impose the following conditions. One of them was that is contingent upon city council approval of the alley vacation in blocks ENM. This condition was met by city council's approval on November 7th of 2022 as part of resolution 4622. Also, that a developer agreement for stormwater retention and installation of required fire hydrants must be recorded in the final plat. So the developer has submitted a hydrant plan that has been approved by the fire marshal. The city attorney has drafted a development agreement for the installation of one fire hydrant on Jackson Street. The other fire hydrant in the plan is already existing. The development agreement also includes parking deferment of two spaces for the health club, which was approved by city council as part of the conditional use permit for the health club and boarding house. Also, a financial guarantee will be required for the installation of the hydrant, and a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until installation of that fire hydrant. So upon further review of the city engineer, as well as the city attorney, really relating to the stormwater on the site, the stormwater will not be necessary as part of the developers' agreement. And the reason for this is all the stormwater is being retained on-site. There's no kind of overflow drains or anything that's connecting to existing city infrastructure. If anything did have to be connected to public infrastructure, then that would have had to been part of the developers' agreement. So the city engineer and city attorney both reviewed this, so that's not going to be part of the development agreement. So with that, the final plat shall be approved based on the following conditions and criteria. The final plat shall be substantially conformed to the approved preliminary plat and phasing plan. Just kind of went over some of that. The final plat is in conformance with the preliminary plat and the conditions set by planning commission and city council. Number two, completed development contract including all required financial securities and timeframe for final plat and final grading. The city attorney has drafted this. It was in his opinion that this didn't need to be a part of planning commission, but would be part of city council, so this document will be included with the city council document for the final plat, and that they would be reviewed congruently by council for approval of the final plat, as well as the development agreement. Number three is conditions attached to approval of the preliminary plat shall be fulfilled or secured by the development agreement as appropriate. So the city attorney has included all necessary conditions of the preliminary plat and deferred parking agreements into that agreement, as I had talked about earlier. And the fourth one, all fees, charges, and escrows related to the preliminary or final plat have been paid in full. All financial responsibilities related to the preliminary plat and final plat are paid at this time. The developer does right now, paid for the application, as well as there's a $1,000 escrow in there. That escrow can be used for certain services by the city, as well as fees by the attorney. That is also in the developers' agreement about holding that escrow in there until completion of all city services have been done as well. So at this time, those financial responsibilities have been completed. And based on the city attorney's recommendation on the financial guarantee for the hydrant, that would come at the time, I believe, of signing of the developers' agreement. So with that, staff recommends approval of the final plat for Creekside Community Development. Can certainly answer any questions, and the applicant is also present.
Very good, thank you, James. So before I open up the public hearing, I'm gonna just ask if any of us have any quick questions for Mr. Kramvik. Please, Mr. Duval.
Mr. Chair, James, how do we, how do we, or how will we capture the applicant's intent to preserve the trees along Second Avenue North, or Second Street Northeast?
So from the last conversation that we had on there, we talked about requiring the number of trees to be planted as part of the landscape plan, as well as the landscape requirements for parking lots along that side. But by the end of it, it was, I believe, determined that we weren't gonna create some type of special regulations for tree buffering on that side. So that there'd be a special requirement to, that that side would have to meet parking lot landscaping requirements. And that's part of the conditional use permit.
And the development, the number of trees per linear frontage.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing here at 6:13. I'm gonna invite anyone who would like to come up and speak, if they want to. You certainly don't have to, but this is your chance, if you would like to approach the commission for any, for testifying. So now's your time, if you'd like. And I'll ask a second time, is there anyone who would like to speak publicly? And hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and, yes, please.
Could we, could we hear from the applicant, please?
Absolutely.
Or be able to ask questions of the applicant?
We can certainly ask the applicant. So if you'd like to come forward, please state your name, your address, and all that good stuff, and it sounds like we might have a question or two for you.
Okay. Vicky Kinney, Lake Shore, Minnesota.
Thank you, Vicky. Please, Mr. Duval.
Thank you, and welcome back.
Thanks.
With your final plat. Just to that question about the intent to preserve the existing mature trees along Second, Northeast Second Street, are you, are you still in the mindset of being able to preserve those trees to the extent possible, given the extensive amount of grading? Where are you at on that at this point in time?
We would love to preserve as many trees as possible, and that's a high priority for us, but I also know because of the hilly terrain, that's gonna be determined by excavation, and, but, but it is, it is my hope and intent, and to, of course, replace trees. So as much as we possibly can, we definitely will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, very good. So I believe I already closed that public hearing, but I'm gonna close it again, just in case. So we're gonna close that public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to us for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
It's my understanding that a final plat is like a procedural thing. Did they meet the requirements of the preliminary plat? And as far as I can determine, they have, and so I would make a motion to recommend approval of the final plat. Period.
Very good. And I believe there was conditions, with the conditions opposed, just as staff, there was conditions attached, if I remember correctly.
We can't attach conditions to a final plat.
There was conditions set upon the preliminary plat that were, that are put into the development agreement, so we don't really need to put conditions onto this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just aren't allowed to do, yeah.
Correct. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Do you, do you guys need to know what's coming up next for these, for these folks, James?
Yeah, so, Vicky, so the next, next part of it, I'll be reaching out to you as part of the development agreement on here, based on city attorney's recommendations, and this will be heard at the next city council meeting on February 21st, I believe, Tuesday.
Very good, thank you, James. All right, item 7B is our proposed ordinance 1546. This is our ordinance amending the outdoor lighting. Please, James.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So really, there's two parts of this that planning commission has reviewed as part of a draft ordinance in the, in the last meeting. The first one is that all new lighting must have a correlated color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or lower. So this would apply to all properties in Brainerd, including residential properties, commercial, industrial, really. So compliance with this ordinance would be achieved through the permit review process, either through the planning process or new building permits, for example, single, single-family homes. We'd also be looking at correlated color temperatures for fixtures. So staff did tweak one part of this from the last meeting. City attorney's recommendation was to provide some type of definition for recreational lighting. I did look back in our definitions, we don't have that, but this did, does come up in the outdoor lighting ordinance in another section. So with that, staff did recommend that it would be revised in the line to state that outdoor, commercial, or public recreational uses such as, but not limited to baseball fields, football fields, hockey rinks, and tennis courts are exempted from this paragraph. So that was one thing that I tweaked from last time, based on the attorney's recommendation of that line. The second part of this talks about dimmable lighting, so all new residential lighting must dim by at least 50% or turn off by 10:00 PM or one hour after close of business, whichever is later. So this would be for non-residential lighting. So after a review by the park board of this line, they did ask for parks to be exempted from this. Essentially, a park is very interested in including dimmable lighting in parks, but because they take parks really as a case-by-case basis, they're interested in reviewing it as there'd be a remodel or some type of new construction with the park. So after speaking with the park board about this, the code that is presented tonight at planning commission would exempt parks from the dimmable lighting requirement. And then kind of the last part that we talked about was adding the PSP district to the residential use standards. With that, we, staff's recommendation would be to hold a public hearing on this, as well as recommending approval of proposed ordinance 1546 as presented.
Very good, thank you, James. All right, do we have any questions for staff? No questions for staff? All right, then it's my intent here to hold a public hearing, to allow anyone who would like to speak on this ordinance. So I'm gonna open this public hearing at 6:18 and ask if anyone would like to come forward. Do we have anyone online? No one online? So I'll ask again, does anyone wish to speak on the proposed ordinance? And one last time, anyone wish to speak on the proposed ordinance? And hearing none, we're gonna close the public hearing at 6:19, and I'll bring it back to us for further discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Mr. Duval.
As I'm looking at, excuse me, as I'm looking at the, the lighting ordinance regarding to performance standards, I'm, I'm thinking that, in particular, on page one or two of the ordinance, "Performance Standards for Residential Use Standards," item 1D, sub I, "Any luminaire or light source not affixed to a structure shall be hooded and downcast to protect the night sky." Now, I think that has been the consistent element of our conversations, and yet, you know, that's a subpart of item D, and any luminaire, D says, "Any luminaire affixed to a structure shall contain a full cutoff fixture which directs and cuts off light at the angle of 90 degrees or less." So when we're putting luminaires on buildings, you can blast that horizontally off of the premises, non-targeted. You know, we've spent a lot of time talking about the height of outdoor lighting fixtures and requiring that they, they drop off at about five foot of height at the property line. We've talked about this standard already in here, that it, it, it shall be hooded and downcast. And so I'm wondering whether this is an opportunity for us to, to have the lighting affixed to structures also comply with one of the five principles for outdoor lighting, responsible outdoor lighting that we talked about at last meeting, where it's targeted, and light should be directed only to where it's needed. And I, and I would like some conversation around, around that. If, if, if I'm the only one that's thinking that we want to have those lights that are attached to buildings that can be high, shoot out past the property line, can probably, we can go out there and measure these things with light trespass at .4 lumens or whatever, candle power, whatever our standard is. But principally, we should, we should be, you know, confining ourselves to the targeting part, and those are not targeted when they're blasting straight out. They're not shooting light up because they are required to comply with shielding to keep it at least horizontal going off the property. But I would like us to consider adding a, an element here that says that luminaires affixed to structures should also comply with that standard light we have at the, in the business industrial standards, like we talked about here, next door, at the bank and so forth, where it cuts off.
Yep.
Five foot of height. Thank you.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Duval. And I'll just chime in here just real quickly, a little bit on that. And when I read this, I read the first line a little bit differently, which seems to address item I, which is, says that "All exterior lighting shall be directed away from adjoining residential property or public right-of-way." So it feels like we were kind of taking a run at it by, by adding that, but agreed that the attaching to structure in a 90-degree angle, obviously, that means, so, you know, hypothetically, you could be shooting it straight out, purely horizontally. So, James, quick question. The writing on the attaching to the structure in the 90 degrees, is there something that we're not thinking of here? Are there instruments that are purposely built that way for specific tasks that we're not thinking of, or help me to, or maybe help us to understand what, what, why that language may have been crafted as such?
So it does still say a full cutoff fixture. So to me, that's downcasting. You know, the 90 degree, I don't, that may talk about, you know, being able to go fully out, but it still does also say cutoff fixture on there. We still do have certain regulations about, you know, like Commissioner Jaeger had said, about, you know, directing away from adjoining residential properties or from public right-of-ways. Now, it doesn't... So the maximum height of a fixture pole or base, so that fixture is on, on the building. So to me, the fixture would also apply to that. I'm not exactly sure why maybe that extra language was added for structures.
Specifically, the 90 degrees, I think, is what's giving us the problem here.
Yep.
Is that right, Mr. Duval?
Well, it's not the 90 degrees, it's, it's, it's to be specific, to confine it to the targeted area, which is the property, or maybe, we had this discussion around the school when they were doing the high school renovations with the, with the new concert hall, where, again, the outdoor lighting, and we were trying to get that directed downward and thinking about colors and things like that. So it's not, you know, the, the, the general definitions in our, in our code are about trying not to shoot the light upward, that's what the 90 degree does. And you could say, or less, but, but you can meet the standard right now by having it shoot out horizontal and downward, but that shoots it past the targeted area. And I think being more specific, like we are, you know, in the business industrial standards, "If the bulb or source is fully recessed and/or shielded from view by an observer five feet above grade at the nearest property line." You know, that's the standard we're imposing, and it keeps light from being projected out. Again, with the overall goal, it's targeted, you're not having scattering off, off-site, and you're not having light trespass issues. So the 90 doesn't quite get it. You know, you can say that, okay, you know, 60 would keep it on my property, but, but we can't specify 60 because, you know, another lot, it might have, only be 45. So maybe trying to connect it better to, to the property lines, like we've done in the business and industrial use standards, get it a little bit more consistent there.
Understood, please, Ms. Woodward.
So my interpretation of it is that it's not C or D, it's C and D. So if I were to change any language at all, I would change it to, I would change D to say, "At an angle no greater than 90 degrees." And C still governs.
Any other comments here?
I guess I have one other comment here. You know, is line D even needed in there?
Yeah, I'll just, go ahead, please.
No, please.
I was just gonna say, I'm reading the, to me, the most important line in the entire performance standard is, is one. It says, "All exterior lighting shall be directed away from the adjoining residential property and other public right-of-way." That seems to set the precedent of all of the substrate, of all of the substandards below. But I think I do understand where you're coming from, you know, Mr. Duval. It seems like the initial line, line one, is trying to control spillage. And, and I'm not sure that, the way I'm reading this, that D or I, D, would allow you to not have to meet that, that overall canopy of, shall, must be directed away from adjoining residential property or public right-of-way. It seems to control the spillage, but I'm open to hear an alternative, an alternative writing here for us to consider, if you'd like, if you have something, Mike, maybe not, or if we want to work on this more.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Do we define somewhere what a full cutoff fixture is? I'm not, I, I've done these before, and I don't know that term. Like, I, I can kind of imply what we mean, but, you know, I wonder if D is just overly complicated, and we don't just simplify it down to say, you know, something along, "Any luminaire attached to a structure shall be downward pointed and, you know, not visible from an adjacent..."
I do see a potential snag with the downward only, because a lot of architectural lighting is placed in a yard and, and directed back up towards the building, or a flagpole, or a facade, or a sign, or something like that. That is the one snag that I see with the, with the downward angle only, is not all lighting on buildings, especially decorative lighting, is cast down. A lot of it is cast up and looks fantastic. So that's the, that's what I, my little issue with the, you know, with, with the overhead, but...
Okay.
I think the spillage is really the most important thing that we're really trying to control, is the spillage onto people's property that don't want it, or into places that we don't want it. And granted, we got a lot of language here that...
I guess I couldn't explain to you what D actually says.
Mr. Duval?
If I may, I mean, I might suggest that simply stating, "Any luminaire affixed to a structure shall comply with item C above," because, you know, or somehow referencing back rather than to, rather than to allow it to, to stand out by itself as its own paragraph, almost says that I can put a light on a building, and it doesn't, I don't have to do C, B, A. Those are all things relevant to poles.
That's very interesting, and maybe makes me more sympathetic to what our staff has suggested. suggested that D can go because we do say all exterior lighting. And, you know, singling out one affixed to a structure seems to suggest that it would be treated differently than all. If we don't mean to treat it differently than all, then maybe, maybe we just get rid of that D entirely and just go with all.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, please.
My only suggestion is that you could take the, in the first line, "All exterior lighting affixed or otherwise," in other words, just cover everything, just make it clear you're covering every light in that first sentence, and then D could go away.
I'd like somebody to fashion a motion or something out of this here, to craft something. James, I, I think you're getting what we're, what we're driving at here.
So I really see it in, you know, section one, it says, "All, all exterior lighting." So all exterior lighting, whether it's on a building, on a pole, has to abide by this in residential and potentially PSP standards. Section B, it talks about the maximum height of the fixture pole or base. So a fixture would be something that would be attached to the building as well. So, so that part's on here. Really, I don't see on a building being able to go to twenty feet unless it were affixed to something. Could it potentially cast out if it's on a building at thirteen feet, like, you know, any other type of thing could be on there, any other type of lighting structure, it could, but it also can't spill into the other property. So as part of the lighting plan, that would have to be produced on it. You know, so to me, D seems confusing and probably not even needed in the ordinance. And D and then subsection I could probably just be stricken from, from the ordinance.
I think, I think that's going the general direction that I'm hearing. Mr. Duval?
You know, and then, and then we have a similar discussion item on Performance Standard E two A, you know, where we're talking about the, the luminaire shall contain a full cutoff fixture which directs it cut, cuts off light in an angle of ninety degrees or less. And are we satisfied that if, if we use the standards that we have for height? In that instance, for two D, for example, general commercial and commercial corridor districts, the maximum height of a pole shall be this high and, and, and then the, exceeding that, that minimum height, the bulb needs to be shielded and recessed. So, you know, in that instance, I'm thinking maybe we still need that ninety cutoff to, to say for a thirteen foot, you meet the standard, but if you have the thing wide open and spilling up, do we have the same issue? By, by having the, by removing D from, from Performance Standard one E, or one residential, we may have the same issue where your, your light could be around globe.
Right.
And, and then, and then you're saying, now I've lost the control here with the ninety degree cutoff. So there's, there's reason perhaps to, to do that. Maybe, maybe the action might be to ask staff to come back with, with the feedback here to, to maybe come back and give us an alternative rather than try and craft it on the fly here with the, with the threads that interconnect with the other districts.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I can see where the writing is trying to go here, for sure, because it, there are light fixtures out there that emit light in all directions and look great and may not be, may not even be spilled, the spillage that we're trying to control, right? So, and again, you got landscape light, you got all kinds of lights that shine in a lot of different directions. I think the, the, the driving, the driving force here is the, the spillage that we're really trying to control. But I think, if I'm hearing you correct, the, the general consensus here is, is that this section could just use a little general cleanup. We've got what appears to be, or what sounds like, a little bit of competing language here. So barring a motion, I think we're hearing that we, Mr. Duval?
Well, just, just to clarify that, that it's, it's more than spillage. We have the language in E one D sub one to protect the night sky. And so, so, you know, I, you know, when we think about round globes, when we think about upward accent lighting and things like that, what, those are some of the things that we're trying to, to get at, I think, with that, that standard is to not just have splashed lighting, but to have it very specifically targeting, whether it's, you know, specifically targeting of, you know, the, the United States flag at the top of a flagpole.
Understood.
You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
But to, to just have random lights pointing upward, that's where that cutoff is. So I, I would say that it's about, you know, trespass, it's about exceeding the boundaries, but it's also about that goal of protecting the night sky.
Right.
So I would not want to lose that element here as we think about how to recraft.
Well, it's almost like the, yeah, exactly. I think it's almost like the trespass could be included to vertical. You know, we have horizontal trespass, which we talk about a lot, but you could, you could actually just, I think, also form some type of language that says vertical trespass also, right? Because you could shine up on something if it's, if it doesn't, you know, shine past the building or shine beyond, right? We could, you could sort of, that would still allow people to use upright or vertical lighting as long as it didn't wash past, right? That's kind of what I'm hearing, maybe?
Targeted lighting.
Targeted lighting, yes.
Like, Mr. Chair, I agree, like, for instance, the lights on the courthouse, there's uplights on the courthouse, on the new, a new Public Works Building that, or the, the county building.
That shine both ways, right?
They look great, but again, is there a purpose beyond just making them look great? Maybe the night sky would be darker if they didn't do that. So, following with Mr. Duval's saying.
Okay. So, looks like we're gonna have, have you take another kind of run at this? Just, you're hearing the conversation here. Vertical trespass also, maybe the hooding in the right, in, in the right way, the right wording here would, would clean this up just a little bit.
Yep, I think I have a good idea of, of direction.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns about this? Very good. We're going...
Chair.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, we're gonna move on then to our, what do we got? We got new business here. Item eight A, this is a conditional use permit for mini storage units at fifteen seven seventy Delwood Drive. Please, James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, one five seven seven zero Delwood Drive is located in a general industrial district, which allows for mini storage facilities as a conditional use. So with that, the general provisions for mini storage in the allowed use section is a minimum of twenty-five percent of the site must be open green space and landscape in accordance with the plan approved by the city council. So the site certainly exceeds this requirement as green space is considered and may be used for stormwater management, rain gardens, wetland areas, and required buffers and landscaping. So with the overhead picture in here, you can certainly see that there is an extensive amount of wetland as well as buffers around the mini storage unit proposed location. Also, landscaping is not required for industrial owned properties other than those along Business three seventy-one, Highway two ten, Highway twenty-five, Highway eighteen, Oak Street or County Road three. So some are major thoroughfares. This one does not lie in any of those, so there's no landscaping requirement for the buildings. Another requirement in the allowed use section is no building shall be closer than twenty-five feet to each other, to allow for parking, loading, driveway and fire lanes. This was reviewed by the fire department, no issues with access there. And according to the general site plan submitted by the two stor-, by, by the applicant, the two storage buildings are seventy feet apart from one another, which is far more than the minimum standard of twenty-five feet. Another one of the requirements is no single building shall be greater than one hundred feet in length. The applicant is proposing two buildings of a hundred and thirty feet in length, which conforms to the ordinance's requirements. The, the next requirement is all structures are to be within two hundred feet of a fire hydrant. The proposed structures are currently not within two hundred feet of a fire hydrant. I believe the closest hydrant, based on conversations with the fire marshal, was thirteen hundred feet away at the nearest southerly intersection. The fire, fire marshal did require a minimum of five hundred gallons per minute for sixty minutes of three thousand gallons of water for storage facilities. So with this, because the site currently does not have that, staff recommends as a condition of the permit that prior to the issuance of the building permit for store, the storage facility, that the fire marshal approves a fire protection plan for the property. Also, prior to final building inspection or certificate of occupancy, the fire marshal completes a fire inspection of the property according to the conditions of the fire protection plan. The next stipulation is that all driveways and parking areas shall be blacktop or concrete surfaced in adequate turning radius for fire trucks maneuverability and is to be maintained throughout the site. Designated snow storage spaces to be provided to ensure adequate and safe access during the winter months. The planned driveway and parking areas, as planned, are to be hard-surfaced with pavement. As I mentioned, the fire marshal did review the plans for accessibility with fire trucks. Also, the site does provide plenty of areas for snow storage. The next requirement is any structures having exposure to a budding residential use, residential zoning districts or public right of way, park or similar, public use areas are to be vinyl, brick, natural stone, wood or stucco facing material. The structure does abut residentially used properties in both the city of Brainerd and the city of Baxter. The proposed site, as well as the residential properties, do have a significant buffer around them from the side properties. There's a, quite a distance between them, as well as there's existing trees and buffering through there. So staff is recommending that that part would not have to require any enhanced materials. But per section five one five dash four dash two E, the facade of the structure along any public right of ways does have a requirement of only fifty percent metal paneling, so it would have to be one of the other materials in conjunction with the metal paneling along the road to, you know, kind of enhance that view from the, the public right of way. And that would be, could be reviewed as part of the building permit issuance. So with that, I certainly can answer any questions. Staff is recommending holding a public hearing, as well as staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with condition that prior to the issuance of a building permit for the storage facility, the fire marshal approves a fire protection plan for the property. And also, prior to the final building inspection or certificate of occupancy, the fire marshal completes a fire inspection of the property according to the conditions of the fire protection plan.
Very good. Thank you, James. Before we open the public hearing, does anyone have any quick questions for James?
Ms. Chair?
Yes, please.
I have a couple, and I, I'm willing to, like, delay some of these two to the end of the meeting and the commissioner's questions. Is this the tiny little spot zone almost of industrial along here? So it's a far western side of the city. And, second question, the water there is actually, would be Baxter's water system, not our water system, correct?
It would be, so they'd have to work with the city of Baxter on that installation.
Do, do, are we, do we know who currently maintains Delwood Drive?
I did notify the city of Baxter as part of our public hearing to see if they did have any comments with it. They did not come back with any comments, but I believe it is the city of Baxter that maintains it.
Okay, so we don't even have an agreement with them for our stretch through there?
No.
Not that you're aware of?
No.
Okay. Ms. Chair, that, that's all the questions I have.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, we're gonna open a public hearing here at six forty-two if anyone would like to speak on this property. Now's the time. Do we have anyone online? Oh, we got somebody. Fantastic. Well, come on up, let us know your name and address.
Baylor Smooty, one five six nine four Baxter. We're actually the house next to this property.
Okay.
There is no city water there.
Yeah. We, yeah, we know. That's what he said.
And then, that's all open to our property. There's not a tree line. So I was just wondering where the buildings were supposed to go upon the property.
And are you able to glean that information from what you've seen here? Otherwise, we'll, I'll probably have you come in and talk to James a little bit about and he can kind of walk you through exactly where they're proposed to go.
Okay. I just, like I said, we're the property directly next to it. I know it's Baxter property, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, absolutely. And James is absolutely more than happy to answer any questions for you about the permit or, you know, about what you see here for documentation or, or show you where it's at, anything, anything along those lines, okay?
And we could pull up the, the site plan as well.
Let's pull it up here and give them, give you a look.
Yeah, I feel like page like four or five of the plans actually has the best site.
Pretty good, yeah.
So keep scrolling down and next one, I think? Yep, right there is probably the best one.
Very good. Does anyone else wish to speak? Public hearing is still open. Anyone else wish to speak? And we had no one online, I believe, correct? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing at six forty-five and I'm going to open it up for, first of all, does anyone have any other questions for the applicant before we know?
Quick question. I just want to clarify that, Mr. Smooty, your, your property is...
Please come back up, Ms. Smooty. I apologize. I should have asked you before you...
But it, but it, it's, it's north on Delwood and on the left-hand side. That's you?
South.
South, okay. South, oh, right there. Okay. All right.
Very good, thank you. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to us for discussion.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, please.
As a conditional use permit on an industrial property, I, I feel like this meets our ordinance. And if we get to the point, I'll make a motion that we approve it consistent with what the staff has recommended. I, I think, I would like to have a conversation and maybe we can do it at the end of the meeting because it's not, I think, specific and germane to the application in front of us, but just about this part of the city and whether we should actually have a broader conversation about de-annexation. We're not in a position to provide utilities to an industrial site. We don't have any intention in the future of doing it. I remember when we were aggressively annexing property out along County Road forty-nine to try to get to this place with the idea that we would someday provide utilities. I, I don't think we ever will. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven forties in here that, to me, would be more appropriate in Crow Wing Township, and I, I suspect that the property owners of those would, would perhaps think so too, or in unorganized territory. And I, I don't feel like this hearing is probably the right venue to have this discussion, but it does raise the issue of, we have this really odd industrial parcel out here in the middle of nowhere that we don't have any capacity to even provide service for. So why is this part of our, why? Not that I don't appreciate people and, like, welcome people into our city, but there's a reciprocation here that when we welcome them into our city, we actually provide them service as part of our city and we're not maintaining the roadway, we're not providing them service. What are we doing? So, maybe we can have that at the end of the meeting.
Yeah. Any other comments?
Ms. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Duval.
I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Maron, did you make a motion or you're...
No, I said, I, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion when we get to that point. I really don't have any problems with this application and if there are any concerns beyond what the staff has laid out, very well.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you know, I think it would be appropriate to apply a condition here regarding lighting color.
The four thousand to, down to three?
Down to three, exactly right.
Good man.
This is, you know, this choice of lighting, I think, is really in spirit about the previous conversation we had, where it's down lighting, right? It's not blasting out, but it's providing the lighting downward. So I, I think that's a, a, a great choice and I think the, when you look at the, the, the lighting plan that they have, or at least how the distribution of light is, it really gets at the conversation we just had previously. The only difference being the color choice. And so I would recommend that we apply a condition of color temperature not to exceed three thousand Kelvin.
Very good. Any other comments, questions, concerns? I'll just, that's the one thing I saw as well. So I caught, that's, I was gonna talk about the color. It's in our new writing, not quite there yet, but it's, it's on its way. So that seemed to be a reasonable condition here as well. And great questions, could be an entire evening.
Yeah, no, I think we could have, right.
It's a great question to add. Then we have other areas within the city where we have similar dynamics playing out. Great question. So with that, I'll be looking for somebody to, to form a motion, please.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Duval.
Motion that we approve the conditional use permit for many self-storage units at fifteen seven seventy Delwood Drive with additional condition that the lighting color is not to exceed three thousand Kelvin.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Duval. Very good. We have a motion by Mr. DeVal.
Ms. Chair, if I could, the staff has also recommended the fire marshal approve a fire protection plan. Could we add that?
Would you be willing, Mr. DeVal, to add that to your motion?
And add that to the fire marshal approval of the plan. And also, prior to final building inspection or certificate of occupancy, the fire marshal completes a fire inspection of the property according to the conditions of the fire protection.
Very good. So we have an amended initial motion. Do we have a second?
Ms. Chair, I will gladly second.
All right. We have a second by Mr. Marone. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And applicant's not here, so...
Applicant is here.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I had you confused with another application, so I apologize, so.
Yep. So next steps, this will be heard at the next city council meeting on February 21st and voted on, you voted on for approval of denial or denial.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is 8B. This is the rezoning of parcel 41160504, Track B, Rural Living, Rural Living One Zoning District. James, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is rezoning parcel 4116050. So this is only Track B. If you look at the site plan, there's a Track B as well as a Track A. The purpose of this rezoning is to prepare proposed Track B of parcel 41160504 for a consolidation with the contiguous parcel 41170515, which is right next to it, much larger. This parcel is also zoned Rural Living One. So with this, staff did an initial review and was speaking with the surveyor of this property, trying to figure out how we can do this. Jordan Road was mandated by MINDOT to be put in in this location. So what had happened is this parcel was split into two. The, I guess it'd be the northeast section is very usable and large. The remnant that was put onto the south side, which was Track B, is pretty small and really wouldn't meet the conditions for an administrative subdivision. So with this, the city attorney recommended that as part of the submittal of the rezoning application, they need to really put a submittal for an administrative zoning consolidation in conjunction with this. So per the city attorney's recommendation, this was how staff is presenting this. The proposed consolidation will result in approximately 37.23-acre parcel, which exceeds the one-acre minimum requirement for the RL1 district. The remaining portion of, it would be Track A, meets a lot-size standards for the general commercial GC zoning district. So, and as a reminder, the RL1 district is intended primarily for agricultural uses. I did list some other uses that are allowed in the RL1 district in the findings of fact. But it's also meant as kind of a reserve. So an applicant, if they are zoned RL1 and are looking to develop, the density requirements really don't allow you to do much or do much subdividing with it. It's really meant for reserve to come in, come back to planning commission, to, you know, do a plat or a PUD, some type of zoning process to be able to do something with the parcel. So with that, general provisions for rezoning. What's required for the planning commission to review. The proposed use is compatible with the present and future land uses of the area. The proposed rezoning of the parcel is consistent with the surrounding parcels and will be consolidated with a parcel currently zoned RL1. The proposed uses affect upon the area in which it is proposed. As of right now, the applicant does not really have a proposed use for this parcel. Again, it's kind of a cleanup for this one for potentially future use of the property. Another consideration is traffic congestion of the proposed use in relation to the capabilities of streets serving the property. Also, the proposed uses impact on existing public services, including parks, schools, streets, utilities, making sure that that doesn't overburden the city's service capacity. Again, there's currently no use for this property and any potential use in the future would most likely require rezoning or some type of plating process. So with that, staff does recommend holding a public hearing for this request. Staff is also recommending approval of rezoning of Track B, parcel 41160504, from general commercial zoning district to Rural Living One Zoning District.
Very good. Thank you, James. Any questions for staff?
I have a lot of questions for staff.
Do you mind if I open the public hearing?
No, absolutely not. Maybe we should get through that first and then...
Very good. So I'm going to jump to the public hearing. We're going to go ahead and open this public hearing at 6:55. If anyone's here, now's the time to come forward. Do we have anyone online? We do not. All right. So one last call. Anyone wishing to speak on this, on this item? Now's the time. And hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:55, and I'm going to bring it back to us for discussion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I sent an email to James, letting him know that I would have some questions tonight about the development of this corridor. I know that this property rezoning would be considered a downzone or a zone to a less intensive use. And that less intensive use assumes no access to city utilities, no connection to anything. The city spent 12 million, 13 million? I can't remember the millions-a-dollar amount exactly, running sewer and water out to the airport. I realize that the airport was the impetus for that, but part of the discussion was, we're going to connect all these people along the way, and the way we're going to retire the big debt we took on and all that is all these connections. And I guess the core of the question I have goes to the viability of that vision or that plan, whether this rezoning is consistent with that or undermines that. And what are we giving up in terms of a long-term trajectory with that particular project by doing this? I know we have a tendency, and cities in general have a tendency, to focus on the project in front of us, and then the follow-through becomes murky. And, you know, it feels like we're half a dozen years out, and maybe we're giving up on a plan that is the opposite of what our intention at the time was. So I'm willing to do that, give up on that plan. I didn't like that plan in the first place. But I think if we're going to do that, we should be intentional about doing that and not fail to recognize what we're actually doing by downzoning this property. That's a long question, but I think you get what I'm after.
Yeah. So I did speak with the city engineer on this, you know, kind of the vision for this. Obviously, he's new to the city as well. Also spoke with our public finance director on the history of how this is financed and how things are going to be repaid in the future. So recommendation from the city engineer is this rezoning and request for consolidation will have no impact on, you know, essentially the hookups and paying for those fees. But I think it's a great question by Commissioner Marone. You know, for any future development that comes in here, when somebody comes in, you know, to potentially, you know, request any replating previously. And I think in our future land use map, that area, which is Anderson Properties, is currently future land use map zone for kind of a, I think, low-to-medium residential. So I think that's certainly something that should be looked at with any future, you know, potential rezonings for use to make sure that, you know, the lot sizes that we're putting in there is appropriate for the amount of infrastructure that we put in along that property. So I think very good question there. And, you know, any major, any major plats or anything, that should be, you know, kind of at the forefront and one of the things we look at. So from the finance department, we didn't assess any of the properties along there, from my understanding. Is, but essentially, when anybody does connect to that system, those sack-and-wack fees would then be put into essentially a recovery account to pay down those debts for what was there. So certainly, you know, the more lots that are put on there, or the more use that's in that area, you know, correlates to a higher sack-and-wack number, which would help pay that down. So with that, I think certainly something, you know, that we need to look at for any large plating projects or rezonings to higher intensity uses. And, you know, the question is, if somebody comes in for a rezoning, is it a high enough intensity use for the infrastructure that was put in? For this one, again, I said, the city attorney's recommendation, because it's kind of a cleanup from an unusable piece that was left over from a requirement from MINDOT to put Jordan Road in, to attach it to the other parcel. He didn't see that there was any effect on the recovery on the public infrastructure that was put in. So I don't know if that kind of answers...
Ms. Chair?
Yeah, please.
And not to argue with you and put you on the spot. What I'm hearing from you, though, is somewhat incoherent between your two departments. You have, your city engineer is saying absolutely no impact on our ability to repay this. You have the city finance people saying, yeah, our repayment is based on, we didn't assess this at all. So it's all public debt that we're repaying. The sack-and-wack fees will be diminished by this, but, you know... So those two things don't reconcile. And I guess the thing that I'm asking is, if we're going to do this, I'm fine with doing this. I hope that we can somehow internalize some lessons from this overall project. Because we made massive public investments that are uncoordinated with our land use plan, our zoning strategy, and with the request we've got tonight. And one of those two is wrong.
And I think, you know, the city engineer certainly sees it as a whole along this development as something very important to consider. I think he was just looking at it just as one small piece, that this one small piece wouldn't affect that infrastructure that was put in.
Yeah, but...
But as a whole, it certainly...
Right. But one small piece here won't, and one small... Right. But you, we invested money in an entire corridor, and we seem to be systematically backing off of that investment. And I just, I want to make that part of our conversation because to me, it's a rather incoherent request that we're getting from staff and recommendation through the city attorney to do something that, to me, seems directly in conflict with what this very large investment that prior staff was telling us we needed to make to develop this corridor out.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please, Mr. DeVal.
I want to reflect back on the future land use development, plan, map development when we looked at three key sites within the city boundaries, southwest, State Hospital, and the Anderson area, as the places where we have opportunity to grow housing in the city. And I find, number one, I wish we could have done this back when we were doing the public hearings for the new zoning map. Because I raised this very question about saying, this should already be RL1 and not commercial. And come back if they wanted to go commercial. But, you know, if this sits as aggregate sites, or maybe a demolition disposal area or something like that, we still don't get our money. Putting this, beginning to roll this out of that general commercial into the residential allows us to move forward with developing what we think is a priority for our city, the residential housing. And so this makes that block a little bit better, bigger, I should say, not better, but a little bit bigger. And we can move forward. And hopefully, you know, to Mr. Marone's point, maybe we can begin to recapture some of the investments here. I don't necessarily see us recapturing the investment if it just is a, is a, you know, an idle site that's just maybe an aggregate pit that's being dewatered to get that sand or what have you, or we're storing torn-up asphalt or any other demolition kinds of stuff. So I'm very much in favor of this transition in approving this rezoning.
Very good. Anyone else? All right. I'll be looking for, I'm sorry, I thought you motioned. I'll be looking for a motion on this, unless anybody else has anything else.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Marone.
I'm going to vote against this.
Okay.
Not because I have, like, some huge moral outrage over this rezoning request, but I do, I want the city council to hear that this isn't a unanimous recommendation. So I'll vote for it if that's what it needs to pass, because, whatever, but...
Well, ultimately, the city council would be determining whether or not this passes or not, so we could pass them any kind of vote we wanted to.
That's true. I just want everybody, I'm not outraged by this request, but I do, you know, I do think it's rather... I was outraged by the project and think that it was a really bad decision by us to do it. And I, you know, I don't want to be proved right here. But I feel like this vote is proving me right. So, because this corridor is not developable, commensurate with the investment we made in it. And that's what this request is demonstrating.
It is.
Chair.
Yes, please, Mr. DeVal.
The motion, please, to approve the rezoning of Track B of parcel 41160504 from general commercial zoning district to Rural Living One Zoning District.
All right. We have a motion to approve. And we have a second by Mr. Corum. Is there any further discussion? All right. Hearing done, we're going to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And motion. Motion carries. Very good. All right. Item 8C, this is the itinerary for zoning code changes related to off-street parking regulations. Please, Mr. Grambic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So at the last planning commission meeting, planning commission asked staff to come up with a recommendation and schedule on planning commission items to work on next. Staff did ask the planning commission if this is an item that the parking commission should look at, or if planning commission was interested in looking at this as well. I know we do have a couple former members of the parking commission as well. The recommendation, or I guess the direction kind of that came from the last planning commission meeting was this is something that the planning commission could tackle. So staff is presenting a potential outline for planning commission to review a draft and draft a new ordinance to update Section 515-4-12 of the zoning code, which regulates off-street parking. So currently, many of the zoning districts are exempted from parking requirements, and this section was not reviewed as part of the zoning code update. One of the reasons for this is these have been exempted for quite some time, even in the previous zoning code. So staff really doesn't have a good understanding of what the required numbers are at this time. We did have the community development intern last summer do a pretty comprehensive study on existing businesses, what the requirements are in our code if they weren't exempted, and then kind of do a study of how full were these parking lots. You know, so with that, staff is recommending the proposed schedule in here. March 15th would be a discussion on the direction of the ordinance changes needed. So we'd be able to present a review of the parking study that was completed for planning commission and then hope to talk about some high-level ideas or recommendations. I know something that was presented potentially in the past is, you know, do we institute a parking maximum number and not have a minimum number? You know, to, you know, really have these sites not just develop parking because it's easy, but, you know, keep and reserve some of those areas for potential future development. So that's one thing we may be looking at. And certainly, the review that was done by the community development intern can help serve on creating some of those high-level ideas. So that'd be the point of the March 15th meeting. April 19th would be just kind of a brief update of the process of updating it, as well as potentially further direction from the planning commission if anything arises, from staff working on that. And then with that, also potentially setting up a workshop date if needed. Otherwise, the May 17th would be looking at a preliminary draft of the amended ordinance for review. June 21st would be present the final draft of the ordinance planning commission for review. And then 19th would present the ordinance and hold a public hearing. So I did put in there, you know, potential to potentially speed this process up would be an option for the community development department. I know we may be working on codification of the city code and really looking through a lot of areas, you know, within the city code. There's a number of sections that need updating, as well as there's contradictory sections. So the community development department might be pretty busy with that this spring, but we don't know if that's going to be a go yet or not. So this could be a little fluid in schedule, and we'd certainly update the planning commission on where the community department is on the codification process. But with that, staff is recommending the planning commission's next priority is amending Section 515-412 of the zoning code with the preliminary outline presented by staff.
Very good. Thank you, James. Do you have any questions for staff? All right. I will open this up for discussion.
There's much to discuss.
Not much.
It seems like a high priority. It's been a carryover priority for the commission as we were developing or revising the ordinance. So I, to me, it makes sense as our next priority to jump on. I don't know if we need to do it in the form of a motion or just yay. This is where we want staff to put the... This is, this is where we want staff to put their energy.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, please.
If, if we're going to do this, I would request that we at least give some thought and consideration to the, having a parking maximum, a discussion about parking maximums in the commercial corridor zone. I think that's the one where we're going to have the most pressure and the most tension. And I, I, I can tell you what I would do, but I don't know if that was what everybody else would do. But I would appreciate if we could at least have a discussion of what that might look like.
Absolutely. Anything else? Anybody else? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Nothing? I was going to say, I think this times out fairly well because I think we are at least somewhat talking about kind of re-mobilizing the parking commission that's been sitting somewhat dormant for a while. So I think some of this may actually time out fairly well.
Am I still on that or have I been kicked off?
Oh, you're off. I don't know. I don't know.
I thought maybe I timed out or something.
But I, I know that there was a discussion of kind of maybe getting a meeting and seeing where we're at with. Yeah, because we really haven't implemented much of the work that we did and it certainly does seem to time out. So I don't know that we, are you looking for a motion on this, James? Or just, it sounds like we got consensus here.
As long as there's a general consensus.
Yeah. So unless there's an objection to the general consensus, now's your time.
Good.
All right. Well, it sounds like we're, yeah, we're getting the band back together. So good deal. All right. Our next item here is the public forum. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak with regarding matters that are not on the agenda. So I'm going to open the public forum at 7:11. Is there anyone online? Is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public forum at 7:11 and we're going to move on to staff reports, number 10.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So staff would like to update the planning commission on the next city council meeting. There are three ordinances that staff's going to be presenting that's kind of outside of the purview of the planning commission's updates to the city code. It's been in the paper as well as, you know, I was on, on the radio this past Monday as well with the public engagement in there. So a final reading of ordinance 1543, which is regarding the harboring of chickens and ducks on properties. 1543 is going to be a final reading. A public hearing will be held. This would allow for four chickens or ducks per property in addition to the four cats or ducks per property. So this is something that council member Johnson started about a month ago. Had staff review this and it's at the final reading stage at city council. The next ordinance is 1544. This would allow the use of outdoor power equipment for snow removal purposes only for, outside of the hours defined by section 214, which regulates issues. So this would be for snow plowing purposes only for outdoor power equipment. Really, right now, we have regulations during the weekdays from 6:30 to 10:00. So we are going to be, city council is going to be conducting a final reading of this ordinance as well as holding a public hearing. The last ordinance would be for 1547. This is our abatement and citation process within the city. We adopted a new ordinance last spring. Some of the things worked with this. We did review this at SPW to make some tweaks to this citation and abatement process. Really what, what came out of the committee was that the issues with lawn grass, snow removal on sidewalks, garbage and animal feces needed to be handled sooner. Previously, we were doing three citations and then city council would have to make a determination or recommendation. Now for these four instances, staff will be able to abate them without going to city council and then repeat offenders of these will be able to be abated faster. So with that, that's what the community development department will be presenting to city council.
All right. Thanks, James. All right. Our favorite section, number 11. This is the commissioner member report. So I'm not, I'm not going to do this in any particular order. So anyone who wants to jump in, just jump in.
I'm happy to report.
Very good.
That with an exception of a few treacherous spots, the thaw has made the sidewalks walkable in, especially on the Washington Bridge. And, and so I'm happy to, to see walkable pavement again, rather than just crusted over snowbanks that you have to hike high on. So with that, that's all I have.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say, I'd remind everybody to circle your calendar for June 3rd. June 3rd will be the grand opening and ribbon cutting at the new Mississippi Trailhead Park and be there.
Absolutely.
11 to 3.
That's correct. Music?
It'll be music.
Food?
Ribbon will be cut. Beer, maybe?
Beer's really, really on the, we've got to really get a lot of work done to get beer there by June, but it's entirely possible.
Pressure's on you guys now.
Yes. Anybody else? Please.
I've already seen an increased interest in books on raising ducks, so this will, this will be exciting.
Very nice. Very good. Anything, Mr. Marone?
Well, Ms. Chair, I've got two, two things. The first one, we can just maybe make a regular recurring agenda item. I'd just like to get an update on our crypto mining operation and if there's been any change or any progress there.
Crypto update.
We have been in contact with them. The last email that we had received is they were potentially closing this Friday.
Okay.
So I will update if, if that did happen at the next planning commission meeting.
I will ask at the next meeting. So you, and then, Ms. Chair, I, I don't know what the best way to proceed with having a discussion about de-annexation would be. But, and I, I don't think there's another body to really, in the city, as far as the structure that I know, to actually prompt that discussion.
We could certainly start it.
Yeah. I, I would be interested in starting that conversation. There's almost 300 acres of the city that should never have been brought in and I think would be better off. They would be better off and we would be better off if they were actually not part of the city. And I'd like to, I'd like to have that conversation. So I'm, I'm deferring to you and asking you, you know, as the chair, if you would schedule that and get that on a meeting and.
I think it's, I mean, I, every voice is valid. So I, I think we should, it's something we could absolutely bring up. I mean, I don't know what kind of staff time we think we'd have into putting a backbone to this for us to talk about. But I could, yeah, please, James.
Yeah. I think at least at the next meeting, I could get some guidance from the city attorney to see what that process may look like and, you know, maybe what's done before in other cities.
Sure.
Perhaps, Mr. Chair, could we perhaps ask Baxter if they wanted? What would they trade us for? Do a swap here.
It'd be, would it be, I don't think it'd be Baxter.
No, it would be to unorganized territory. And, and, yeah.
Unless Baxter wants it.
Unless Baxter wants it, yeah, absolutely. Well, we could run sewer out there.
That was, I remember, so in 1998, 1999, I was working for Wood Smith-Nolting and I was part of the, the middle of all these conversations. And you've just seen some of the crazy lines we drew on maps of where sewer and water was going to be and go and how that whole swamp was going to be developed with like a mega mall up here. And yeah, it was. I mean, that, the one road in Baxter, the one through the golf course that has, that's been there for 15 years now, that was all part of that master strategy to, yeah. So anyway, I would, I, I think we'd do a public service if we could have that conversation.
Let's have a conversation.
I miss that golf course.
Mr. Chair, and maybe to expand the, the request of the city attorney, I, I think also the question of annexation opportunities should, should also be. You know, and I would say specifically areas that are currently surrounded by Brainerd with, with underlying infrastructure in place. And, you know, so if we're thinking, let's, you know, it seems appropriate to let something go here. Where should we be pursuing annexation? And, and to me, it would almost be a package conversation. So if we could expand the, the request of the city attorney as to how we would proceed on these things, what's the, what's the right avenue? Are we the right body? I would appreciate looking both sides of that.
Maybe come back with something?
Yeah, I think for the next meeting, we could provide a report on kind of what the next steps would be.
All right. Conversation started officially.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. I have nothing to add. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
I think in Minnesota, it's technically called detachment.